All right, well, it looks like it is that time noon. Go ahead and ring the bell. Welcome, everybody. Good to see everybody here for our final Rotary meeting of 2020. It's December 17. Let's see, do we have anyone to volunteer to lead us in the pledge? I know someone's got a flag graphic they can stick up. Any takers? Let's see. Okay, I'll do it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I see some mostly familiar faces on the screen here. Do we have any guests today? I know that we have our Students of the Month, which we'll get to with the program, but any other guests out there?
No.
I don't see any. All right, well, we have some announcements today. We have, we've had a lot going on with the donation drives and Salvation Army bell ringing. That's gone pretty well so far. Nathan and Corinne couldn't be here today, but they let us know that we raised around, I think it was around 360 bucks last Saturday, and we've got more this Saturday coming, so that's a good boost for the Salvation Army for Christmas. Let's see, I think for our Rotary Moment and announcements on bell ringing, Sylvia is gonna share her experience with that. So, go ahead, Sylvia.
I came up for them was to raise money for the Salvation Army, but I didn't realize that you really have a great opportunity to brighten somebody's day who's coming into Fred Meyer's. Just, you know, saying hello or good morning to somebody who's walking in by themselves. That might be the only non-commercial greeting they are gonna get all day. You know, to say, "Have a great afternoon," or "Have a good day" when somebody leaves, just because you mean it, was really kinda nice, you know? And people get a thank you, giving them the opportunity to give, whether it's, you know, 50 cents or five bucks, and get the same thank you was really pretty neat. So, I'd encourage people to do that. Nathan says he's got backup, but we do still have slots from two to six if somebody's interested. And don't forget the coat drive cut off for that is, I'd say tomorrow afternoon. They need to get into the help program. So, drop offs at Freddy's or with Julie at the bank. So, thanks.
Hey, Fred. I have an addition to the Salvation Army ring. So, our family is gonna be at Fred Meyer from 12 to 2:00. And just to encourage you guys to come see us, Rob and I are gonna wear matching Christmas outfits. So, come donate.
All right, thanks, Amy. That's definitely gotta be worth a trip to Fred Meyer's between 12 and 2:00. So, we're gonna be ringing the bells from 10 to 2:00 on Saturday. So, go by and I think Peggy and Jim are first shift, so that oughta be good. So, thanks, everybody, for pitching in and helping out with that. Let's see.
Are those the same outfits that you were gonna get fined for?
Yep, yep.
Sounds good.
Well, then, I encourage everyone to go by and see them too. They're quite unique.
And drop a couple bucks in the red kettle while you're at it.
I also have now a matching mask that goes with my outfit, so.
What day is it, Amy?
What was that?
What day is that again?
Um, that's Saturday.
All right, that should be fun. So, I have a little piece of Rotary history here to give away with our drawing. I don't know if I can show this here, but back in 1996, Newport Rotary had a service project, which was Free Willy Foundation coins. And this is an ounce of sterling silver with gold plating, priceless, obviously. This one, it's got, I don't know if you can see it, it's got the little Rotary logo symbol on the back with the Yaquena Bay Bridge. And this is number 750 right here out of, I don't know, a couple thousand or however many they made. But I'm going to raffle this off with the, right after the 50/50. So, the same, same drawing and, and no other tickets needed aside from 50/50 tickets. So, we will do that after the meeting, and it comes with this little case too. So, anyway. Let's see, we didn't have our Sergeant at Arms last week, but I think he's probably got some stuff for us this week.
Hello there, Rotarians. Yes, I do. Forget it, did you take a wrong turn? What are you doing here?
What? You're not happy to see me, Bob?
I am very happy to see you. I haven't seen you for a long time. How's everything over on the campaign?
I brought a special hat just for you.
There you go. Now, I am really, really happy.
Good. I'm glad to be here.
How, how's everything at the college?
Well, we are, just finished another term and had finals last week. And, you know, things are doing about as well as could be expected. We're happy that we've retained about 90% of our enrollment. We are seeing a drop off in students and, you know, from all the impacts and things. So, I'm looking forward to when we'll be able to do more face to face.
Well, good. I hope that comes soon.
We do, we do. Yeah, yeah.
Tiana, are you with us? Are you off? Oh, there you are.
I'm right here. Can you hear me? I'm not on mute anymore.
And now, tell the rest of us why you are here today.
I'm here every week, actually. I just sometimes.
That's the truth.
Yes. Sometimes I, in all fairness, I do double duty, and I have more than one meeting at the same time. Because it's online, I can actually do them at the same time. So, sometimes I have my camera off, and you so politely called me out when you saw me at Newport Seakin Seafood.
Well.
Yes.
What a coincidence.
Okay, so I'll do a, can I do a $10 apology for that, or?
You can do whatever you'd like, as long as you admit that you had to be called out on. Which you did admit.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, well, I'm a really nice guy, and don't forget me at Christmas.
Okay.
What else we got? Bo's not around. Wendell. Marcia, you got me all choked up yesterday, and I couldn't hardly talk, but I'm talking today.
Well, can I be $10 happy today?
What's that?
I wanna be $10 happy today.
Okay, well, tell us why you're $10 happy.
Because my guest, I believe Gretchen Havner, has joined us. She will appear as Brian Gardner, but Gretchen is someone that is a friend that I used to share office space with, who is an attorney, who does a lot of juvenile law. And I'm trying to get she, both with Gretchen and her husband, Brian Gardner, who visited us a couple weeks ago, to join as a couples' membership. So, if everybody could say, "Hi, Gretchen."
Hi, Gretchen.
Hi, Gretchen.
Well, that's very nice. Let's hope that they do join.
Hi, Gretchen.
Any other happy dollars out there? Anybody happy about their birthday or anything? Anybody, anybody?
I'm happy, Bob.
Did we talk about your birthday?
Me?
You?
But we did a while ago. But I'm happy for the, I'm $10 happy for the Rotarians that were involved in the fundraiser for the Senate of our work. And I'm greatly appreciative of their generosity and the time that they put in there. Thank you.
Now, if you notice, I haven't fined anyone. Everybody's just happy and volunteering, so if you feel like volunteering.
Hey, Bob, I have a little something.
Okay.
So, Nada, I don't know if you can see me, the way the squares go. Here I am. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna throw out $10 and do a little kind of a donation promo, if you will. Central Lincoln PUD has a secret helper program. And if you wish, if anyone wishes to pay someone's electric bill or throw a little money on a neighbor or a friend that you know is struggling, you can do that confidentially through our secret helper program. All you do is just drop a check in the Dropbox with the name of the person that you'd like to help. We can't tell you if anyone is struggling or behind. You can also make it anonymous and ask the customer service representatives to post it to the, to anyone in need or share it between those they feel that are struggling the most. So, it's called the Secret Helper Program, and your check would be to Central Lincoln PUD. You can just drop it off in any of our, sorry, my husband just got home, the dogs are nuts, any of our Dropbox. So, $10 happy for that.
Well, Sinetta, that's awfully nice of you and PUD. Kudos, kudos. Anyone else wanna say anything?
Bob, I have something.
Wanted, let's see, who are we talking to?
Your favorite governor. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, are you back from vacation again?
I haven't been anywhere, but thanks for the nice thoughts. I am $25 towards my Paul Harris proud. And I know Amy, who's also on our meeting today, is equally $25 proud because Jillian, our oldest daughter, applied to Oregon State University. She was accepted as a new Beaver. And she also earned a $3,000 merit scholarship. And so, we are so proud of her that we just about can't stand it. So, go Beavs.
Go Beavs. I'm so proud of her that she's not gonna be one of those ucky ducks.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, that's good. She made a very wise move. Very wise.
Thank you all.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Bob, Dave Eater here. I'm $10 happy because the vaccines have be, began to be distributed around the country, so that's pretty good news.
Oh, that's great news. Boy, the numbers have just gone crazy lately. Emart?
So, on top of Rob's, I wanna also feel pretty proud of my grandson, who also applied to OSU. He got accepted, and he accepted in return. And he also got a $3,000 merit scholarship, so that was really nice.
Why, the kids know where to go.
Well, I don't know about that. Bob, I.
We can drop it.
I had to tell my family there's a rodent in the house, but I don't, so. You know, being a duck, I just, I have a little problem with that. But seeing as he wants to go into computer science, I, I think Oregon State is probably a better school for that than Oregon.
I will tell you for a fact that Oregon State is a better school. Anybody else out there?
Yeah, Bob, I was so busy saying how happy I was to see you again that I neglected to say that I was also $20 happy to be back with you all and be able to be here today. So, I put that over in the chat, but then all this talk about OSU and, and offspring. And so, I'm also, the dog's happy. My son-in-law graduated, was, started out in community college and then transferred to OSU and completed his degree in computer science. And that, that rascal, his first job offer, and he's working now, and he's being paid $97,000 a year, his first job out of college.
Oh, my.
Like, oh, my God. So anyways, we're all happy because we've been floating their, their collective boats for a while and assisting, and now they're finally launched. So, we'll go another $50 happy for that.
Well, let's.
That's a total of $75.
Let's give a big hand on that.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations and Merry Christmas.
Yeah, OSU is a great school, and their engineering program is just phenomenal. So, he had multiple offers, and he's often launched, so. And my daughter is enrolled, and she graduated from OSU, and biology is now in the master's program for wildlife biology. So, it's quite the Beaver family.
Boy, I tell you, the Beavers have just been doing great. They even won in football this year.
Oh, my goodness.
Anybody else? Okay, well, in that case, I'll turn it back over to Freddie, and thank you for your generosity. Freddie?
All right. Well, thank you, Bob. Well done, and congrats to Jillian and the graduates. That's exciting news for the, you know, Oregon State is looking better every year, I think. It's, that's great, great news. So, any other last minute announcements before we get into the program today?
Freddie, I do have one there if I can.
Sure, sure.
So, with the scheduling and working on getting folks filled out for schedule, I do have a gap. So, one of our first ones in the new year, January 14. So, I'm putting a call out. If anybody's got a program, we wanna try and get that filled up here. So, I'm, I'm missing, or I've got an open spot, January 14 for us.
All right, thanks, Richard. Any other announcements? I don't see any. So, I forgot to give my, today in history for December 17. Today, in 1903, the Wright brothers made the first sustained motorized aircraft flight at 10:35 a.m., piloted by Orville Wright at Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. 1933 NFL championship, first title game was at Wrigley Field, Chicago. The Chicago Bears beat the New York Giants 23 to 21. And in 1989, The Simpsons, created by Matt Groening, premiered on Fox TV as a full animated series. First episode was Simpsons Roasting on an Open Fire. It's been going strong ever since. All right, so today, we have our Student of the Month program, and I'm going to turn things over to Raina Mattson to introduce the students.
Thank you. Our first Student of the Month is Lexi Giampa. She is a 4.0 student involved in leadership and in IB English. She is a recipient of the President's Award for Educational Excellence and the Beat the Odds Scholarship Award. You also may see her if you are a Dutch Brothers fan, so she works quite often there. So, please welcome Lexi. And I should also say that we have a few guests here for her. So, Erin Carrington and Rosemary Hume are on the line to celebrate her. Go ahead, Lexi.
Hi, guys. First, I'd like to thank the Rotary Club for having me here today as a December Student of the Month. I'd like to start by sharing my story with you guys. In elementary school and middle school, I was living in an unsafe environment at home. My family struggled with alcohol addiction, and I was in an unsafe environment. I was not able to suitably take care of myself at home. People in the community began to notice, and things weren't going well. I'll never forget the day in middle school when I showed up to class and Ms. Minch, who at the time was Ms. Ruffin, pulled me aside and asked me if I was getting enough to eat. It was a huge wake-up call that I needed to be in a safer environment if I wanted to succeed in my future. Not long after that, Erin Carrington, a physician assistant and medical director at the Children's Advocacy Center, and Warren Sparks, former medical director at hospice, took me in as their own children. They blessed me with amazing opportunities to travel the United States as well as Belize. They taught me so much about college and the importance of community and cultures. Living with them, I started to play sports. I joined Leadership. I began to volunteer at marathons, was a camp counselor at Peace Village, and helped out at school events. Knowing that I did not have financial support for college, my sophomore year, I began, I stopped playing sports and began working full-time. After my sophomore year, Erin and Warren moved to Hawaii. I was fortunate to be able to live with their family friends, Alita and Simon Byrne, so I could easily stay in Oregon, where I see the most opportunity for college financial support. I began working at Dutch Bros, and now to, two years later, I'm a shift leader pursuing, pursuing management positions. My job at Dutch Bros has also played a big role in the person I am today. It is a job that gives me opportunities to connect with different people from our community each day. Throughout the pandemic, I have been lucky enough to be considered an essential worker and continue to have my job stay open. This has been very important to me because I'm an independent student, and I pay for almost everything that I have. To this day, I currently still live with Simon and Alita Byrne, who have also become family to me. As a young child, I was not always able to control my living environment, but I knew I could control my academic success. My education is extremely important to me. And growing up, I always told myself I wanted to be valedictorian. And now, I'm currently proud to say that I am on track to be just that. I was recently selected as a Beat the Odds Scholarship winner alongside 15 other scholars in Oregon, as well as winning the Schoolhouse Connection Scholarship nationally alongside nine other students, which recognizes overcoming homelessness through education. And just this morning, I was accepted into George Mason University and offered a $68,000 scholarship. I plan to continue to apply for scholarships and hope to go after the Ford Scholarship as well. I've not decided on a specific college that I'm attending, but I just am keeping my options wide open. The first person I'd like to thank is Ms. Wees. My freshman year, I had Ms. Wees as a Spanish and character leadership teacher and aided for her my sophomore year. Ms. Wees had known me prior to being her student because she had taught my older sister throughout high school and knew what my situation was like at home. I can truthfully say that I've never met such a selfless and kind person as Ms. Wees. Ms. Wees put so much of her time in to make sure that her students have the most enjoyable and positive learning environment in her classroom. Whether this be fun decorations in her room or fresh donuts on Friday morning, Ms. Wees went above and beyond and continues to for the students at Newport High School. I often recall a lot of my memories with Ms. Wees, being her stopping me in the hallway or pulling me aside to ask me how I'm doing and how things are going at home. My freshman year, while I still played basketball, I remember her making me packets so I can do my work on the bus. She would even spend time with me during her lunch to help me understand a concept better that I had missed. Ms. Wees made me feel important and loved by the staff at Newport High School. And I will always be very grateful for her and the ways that she impacted me throughout those rocky stages of my life. She is the type of person who tells you that she is there for you and means every single word of it. So, thank you, Ms. Wees. The next people I'd like to thank are Erin Carrington and Simon and Alita Byrne. I've been so blessed to have the opportunity to live with the most amazing families who take me in as their own and love me unconditionally. You guys have taught me what it means to work hard and achieve goals. I look to, I look up to each of you not only as successful, healthy adults, but as parents. Without you guys, I don't know where I would be today. You have truly saved me, and I'm so thankful for the safety and care you provide me. Erin has really inspired me to further my education with college and has helped me along the way, whether it be scholarships, FAFSA, or applications. I aspire to be as great of a parent to my children someday as you guys have been to me. Lastly, I would like to thank the community. Being selected as Student of the Month is such an honor that reiterates to myself that I can do this no matter what obstacles are thrown at me. I can overcome them and move forward successfully. I don't think I would be where I am today if it wasn't for all the help I've received through Newport High School and our community. Being a part of Leadership alone has changed who I am today, and it has given me opportunities to organize and lead events as well as connect to many incredible resources. After high school, I plan to continue working for Dutch Bros in management at Corvallis while pursuing a business degree at OSU. I want to thank you guys for all taking the time to hear my story today. It has been such an honor to participate in the Rotary meetings this month and be recognized by such an incredible club. So, thank you guys so much.
Congratulations, Lexi. Our next Student of the Month is Jiro Gonzalez, and he is joined today by his mom, Terry, and his sister Jillian, who's also a Newport High alumni. He has a 3.89 GPA, is involved in leadership and track and field, and has been part of the National Honor Society. Please welcome Jiro Gonzalez.
Hello. Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. Thanks so much for having me today and giving me the opportunity to share my story. I was born in the Philippines, and I moved to the U.S. when I was six years old. I didn't find it very difficult moving to Oregon. I thought it was pretty easy, especially compared to my older siblings. Since I left at a younger age, I was, I didn't really like leave or had anything to leave behind. So, when I started grade school here, I was a quiet kid. I spoke very few words and rarely raised my hand. I was also very shy because I didn't know anybody, and I had just moved from like halfway across the globe. Also, I didn't know how to speak English very well. But I was able to learn as time went on, and I was still an introvert, but, and I still am. But I'm, I've been to a spec. One thing that helped me break out of my shell was joining Leadership during my eighth grade year of middle school. And I do remember Lexi in that class, too, was fun. It was my favorite class because it showed me a way of how I can contribute to school. It helped develop my passion of being a service to others. I took Leadership again my sophomore year and the rest of my years. It will always be one of my favorite classes to attend because of the ability it gives me positive impact. Another way I was able to fulfill my passion of helping others was through Unified. Unified was a club that creates inclusive environments for students with disabilities. In this club, I got to make friends and spin pool events like the Polar Plunge, where we dressed up and we dove into freezing waters to raise money for Special Olympics. I was also a Unified partner in the Unified basketball team, where I really got to know the people there and really strengthened the bonds we had. I liked being a part of this club because I got to build friendships with other students who were more reserved, like me, and I became a friendly face. They would say hi to in the hallways, and it was a good feeling to know that I could make a positive change in others like that. Leadership in Unified had helped my passion for helping others to grow. There's a reason why I'll be going to college to pursue a career in physical therapy, while hopefully be given the opportunity to be able to aid others and leave a positive impact in their lives. I would like to thank you guys for giving me this opportunity, and thank you to my teachers who supported me and helped me be successful, and thank you to my parents who take amazing care of me, give me lots of support. Thank you.
Wow, thanks, Lexi and Jiro. Boy, you're both really amazing students and deserving of Rotary Student of the Month. I think anyone who loses faith in the future of society really needs to attend one of these Student of the Month meetings because I know you guys are gonna go far and do great things. So, as a recognition of your achievements, we're going to vaccinate 50 children against polio in each of your names. So, thanks for coming today and talking to us, and congratulations on the well-deserved honor. All right, so, moving on to, yes?
Freddie?
Yes?
I'd like to contribute $50 to John and Raina's Paul Harris for creating an environment at the high school that allowed Lexi and Jiro to thrive and grow and become wonderful citizens in our community. So, both John and Raina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Keith, and I'd like to second that too and match that because I agree. I think it's just an incredible environment for kids to succeed and excel. And, and I think that really sets Newport apart from a lot of different schools, so, so thanks for that. All right, before we get into the last minute announcements, we'll move on to our secretary. And I think today that is Sonia.
Freddie, yeah, so we've got, pretty good, we've got 33 Rotarians and 39 people total on the call. But 33 Rotarians is, I think, smack in the middle of 50% attendance. I'm not like Jim, I don't add in makeups because I have no idea about that kind of stuff, but. So, we had really good turnout. Also, for the 50/50, we've got $95 in there, and that means that the big winner's gonna get $47.50. So, let's see if I can, I will try to show you the wheel here. Okay, so I'm just gonna spin the wheel. You guys are gonna have to take my word for it. And the big winner is Megan Shane for $47.50.
And Sonia, why don't you spin it one more time for the Kiko coin?
Okay, my money needs to go to the Salvation Army bucket, please.
Okay, all right. We are spinning a second time. And that's Kathy Heater.
All right, Kathy, I know where to find you, so I'll get this to you. All right. Let's see. Thanks Sonia. John, do we have a social media award this week?
We do. And the winner this week is principal of Newport High, Raina Matson.
All right, congrats to Raina.
I can relate that to Salvation Army too.
Nice. Yeah, Kathy, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank all of the Newport Rotarians for all of your donations of toys and between the two stores and Rotary, we took four carloads of toys to the children for the Otis Fires. And that encompassed everything from infants all the way to teenagers. So we even had a Rotarian from out of town who brought her mother's Barbie collection. So I had a, I had one full carload of Barbie dolls. So it was, she was from out of town, but she heard about it. So Rotary just keeps on giving. But congratulations to Newport Rotary Club, you outdid yourselves. It was an awesome, awesome job.
Yeah, thanks Kathy. And on a similar note, I've got a big pile of clothing in here at the office for the foster kid drive. So thanks for everyone's generous donations with those too. I think it's going to be a big help for the foster kids this year. And before I forget, we also have the membership incentive to do.
Yeah, I forgot to do that. I'm pretty sure it's $5 this month. And we've got Peggy Walker is the winner.
All right, congrats Peggy.
Okay, this is Peggy. Just take that $5 and add 20 to it and put it towards the Salvation Army bucket.
Nice.
Thank you.
Boy, we've raised some good money today for Salvation Army. That's great. Nathan and Corinne will be happy to hear that. So thanks, everyone. Let's see, our next meeting isn't until January 7th. So we have a couple of weeks off. Next meeting is in 2021, first week. And it will be the Centro de Ayuda is our program for, for the 7th. That's a really good local community resource. And a couple of things I forgot to announce earlier, I posted a picture of the, we have a billboard in South Beach. It's right across from the Wilder. Headed northbound towards Newport. Look to the left. It's kind of across from the Wilder Turnoff. And it's a thank you to essential workers and healthcare workers from Rotary. And that was generously donated by district. Didn't cost our club anything. There's only four in the state. I think there's one in Corvallis, one in Newport, one down south. And I can't remember where the fourth is, but that's a nice thank you on behalf of Rotary to essential workers. And it's nice that our local workers get to see that every day if they're driving into town. And a few, just a kind of some last remarks on 2020. It's definitely been, been a challenging year and we haven't been able to meet in person. But our club's definitely stepped up to the challenges. And I've sure been proud to be a Rotarian this year because we've accomplished some great things. So a reminder of some of those things that we've accomplished this year. Our Polio Plus contributions vaccinated over 2,000 children around the world against polio. Our Meals on Wheels contributions resulted in over 1,500 meals served here in Oregon to those in need. We contributed thousands of dollars to our local food share. We contributed thousands to Samaritan's Patient Support Fund. We provided beautiful landscaping for Habitat for Humanity's Newport Build. We cleaned the beaches. We've supported local businesses and restaurants. We're contributing warm clothing and funds to our foster program. Donated funds to Salvation Army and helped raise funds through the Bell Ringing Drive. And we've also raised funds for our local members organizations, including Children's Advocacy, Advocacy Ola, and of course Salvation Army, to name a few. And we've supported a lot of global initiatives through our support of the Rotary Foundation too. So boy, what a year it's been despite the adversity around us. And thanks, everyone, for stepping up and, and supporting all those great causes.
And the scholarships, Freddie?
And scholarships. That's, thanks Keith. Yeah, this is probably isn't everything that we've done, but it's a yeah, just boy, lots of great stuff. So thanks, everyone, for that. Any last minute announcements?
Keith, Freddie, I don't know if this was announced, but is there, isn't there a coat drive going on too at Columbia Bank? And is another location for drop-off?
Yeah, so that's to benefit the foster kids and Columbia Bank is a drop-off location. My office is a drop-off location. And what they're looking for are warm coats, sweats, or sweatshirts for foster kids. You know, any, any age kids, I guess, from small to large, whatever. But yeah, they, we used to donate pajamas and turns out that they like to sleep in sweats and, and warm clothes a little better. So coats, sweats, and that'll be going on, I think Sylvia, did you mention through tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah, you've got lunch tomorrow and then they've got to go into the office.
All right. Yeah, like I say, we've got a pretty good pile to donate. So thanks to everyone who's dropped, dropped that off. And I'm sure Columbia Bank has a big pile over there too. So that's really great. Let's see, any, any other announcements? We're a little early today. I think that fine that Bob gave me a couple of weeks ago for running over, I might need a refund this week.
Have yourself a merry little Christmas. May your heart be light. From now on, our troubles will be out of sight. And a wonderful solstice and a happy new year.
All right, nicely done Sylvia. All right, with that Sylvia, would you like to take us out with the five-way test?
You betcha. The five, five-way test of the things we think, say, and do. First, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill? Fourth, will it be as grand? Because we do things even when it is but five is
Is fun.
All right. Well, song and the five-way test, can't beat that. Thanks Sylvia. Much appreciated. And I hope everyone has happy holidays and we'll see y'all next year.